We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Our first order of business, as always, is our invocation. Madam Clerk, do we have a member of the clerk to lead us tonight?
Uh, no, I don't believe so.
Very good. Mr. Leighton is one of your last acts as city councilmember. May I ask you to lead us in prayer? Those of you who wish to join us, please stand and do so.
Dear Lord, we come to you tonight. We ask that you, uh, give us a good evening. Help us to, uh, to celebrate the new council members coming on. Help us to have a, a community that works together in the future. And a council that seeks your guidance in all matters. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. If you continue to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Leighton.
Here.
Mr. Owen.
Here.
Mr. Eckert.
Here.
Mrs. Roth? Okay. Is she...
Councilmember Roth, you may need to speak out just a little bit, please.
Can you say that again, Mrs. Roth?
I'm present, can you hear me?
Much better.
Yes, thank you.
Perfect.
Mayor, we do have a quorum present.
Thank you very much. Next item is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
I think Mrs. Roth.
I was going to make a motion, if that's okay?
Okay.
Mayor, make a motion to add a presentation from Miami County Commissioner Vaughn after the approval of the agenda.
There, second. We have a motion and a second to amend the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Just for clarity of the record now, I'm going to do a straight call for the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 400. This takes us to our consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 400. First of our formal council action items, qualification, oath, and seating of council members. Madam Clerk, would you please swear in the new council?
Mr. Burkey? Would you come forth?
I'm getting out of way. Yes, if there are pictures, I don't need to be there either.
I, Joe Burkey, do solemnly swear... That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Kansas. And faithfully discharge the duties... Of council member. To the city of Spring Hill, Kansas. So help me God. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Peel, you can come on up.
Mr. Burkey, you need to tell your seat up here.
You want me by the mic, I suppose?
Yep.
I, Brian Peel. Do solemnly swear... That I will support... The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Kansas. And faithfully discharge... The duties of council member. To the city of Spring Hill, Kansas. So help me God.
A pleasure.
Pleasure.
It's been a pleasure. I'll join you gentlemen in just a few minutes.
Hey, I'll see you later. Good luck figuring out your job. Thank you for your service.
And evidently, I have short-term memory problems. Commissioner Vaughn, you have the floor.
Thank you. Mayor Ellis, I could feel the daggers from your eyes if you knew I was coming up to present today. I, I do want to come here and present my... Appreciate the council and the mayor allowing me the opportunity. And Chairman Rob Roberts for Miami County Commission as well. Come here on two parts, personally, and also representing the Miami County Commission. So I'll start personally. I had the honor to see Mayor Ellis appointed as mayor first and then elected. Continuing to serve the city of Spring Hill, not just as mayor, but also as a city council representative. Long-term service in this community is more than just one decision. It's an ongoing commitment to the community. Not just on Wednesday nights, Monday nights, Friday nights. It's what you're doing for the youth. It's what you're doing for the community itself, and it's a long-term vision that you've had for this community. I personally have viewed that. I've seen the things that you've done in this community, and I personally want to thank you. Lisa and I have been here, we're still newbies, 20 years. And, um, we've seen a lot from you. I, I commend your commitment to law enforcement, the rule of law, and the youth, and the community that you hold so dear to your heart. Because you are a, a good old boy from Spring Hill that came back and are still here. And I know this doesn't end your service. So, that's personally for me to... But then also, representing as a Miami County Commissioner, we have a proclamation from the rest of the commission that I'm going to have the chairman read.
Mayor Ellis, we've only done this four times in the history of Miami County. So I want you to know what a rare privilege it is for us to represent the citizens of Miami County. Therefore, the Board of Miami County Commissioners proclaim, January the 10th of 2022, Steve Ellis Day in Miami County. We encourage all citizens to remember to recognize Mayor Ellis for proudly serving the city of Spring Hill. Therefore, the Board of County Commissions encourages all citizens to celebrate the achievements you've had within this Spring Hill and your service proclaimed today, January 10th, 2022. And you would all do me a rare privilege if you would stand and give him a applause for his service.
Next item on the agenda is the council's election of its president. Are there nominations?
Mayor, I make a motion to nominate Councilmember Burkey for council president.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries 310. Congratulations, Mr. Burkey. You are the council president, and by our charter, you will now be sworn in as the mayor of the city of Spring Hill, Kansas. If you would please go to the lectern. Madam Clerk, if you would administer the oath of office for the mayor.
Make sure he has it.
Madam Clerk?
I, Joe Burkey. Do solemnly swear... That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America. And the Constitution of the State of Kansas. And faithfully discharge... The duties of mayor. To the city of Spring Hill, Kansas. So help me God. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations, Councilmember. How about some citizen participation?
All right, guys.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that Mr. Owen, uh, stepped across the hall for a moment.
Okay.
Don't know if you heard while you were in the middle of your, uh, taking your oath, so we may wait a minute.
We'll give him a couple minutes to get back in here. Well, while we're waiting, first of all, I want to thank everyone for being here and for all the support. Um, I'm honored to accept this position, and I'm excited for the future of the Spring Hill. I think we have a great team here, including the governing body, including the, the staff, Spring Hill City staff. I think they've done a great job this year with the budget and a lot of other things. And, um, I'm ready to get to work serving the community, and thank you all, and, uh, God bless America. With that, we'll wait until, uh, Mr. Owen gets back in here.
Mr. Owen apparently has, uh, elected to vacate tonight's meeting and, uh, no longer, uh, attend. Although he doesn't exactly say he's not attending, he simply states that he is, is leaving. I am unable to continue in attendance at tonight's city council meeting, in my opinion, or our charter ordinances have not been followed. Is everyone able to hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Leave that one there. Maybe I got my microphone tied and fine. Although cords are definitely a danger. Is this a horn? Just get one near me, because I don't really need one.
All right. I am request, uh, I have received a note, or actually, the, uh, the note was provided by someone else, as I understand it. A third party has received a note that was then passed to the city administrator, which reads as follows. Please read for all to hear. I am unable to continue my attendance at tonight's city council meeting. It is my opinion that our charter ordinance have not, has not been followed, charter ordinances, pardon me, have not been followed. I will not be a partied anymore of this tonight. The public has been shut out and kept in the dark on purpose. There should be full disclosure of all information shared with city council to include city attorney's written opinions. Stop hiding everything right behind attorney-client privilege. The public has the right to know. It is their tax dollars that will pay for all the legal fees. My departure is not a resignation. I look forward to receiving the agenda for Thursday's meeting. Mr. Owen is sworn as, has, uh, attended this evening's meeting and was taken, role was taken and, um, is in, and was called. As such, any further, um, action taken will note Mr. Owen's abstention from that, uh, action. Um, as he has not resigned, as he has not stepped out, and as he has otherwise, uh... Actually, we have a quorum because Mr. Owen was in... He's no longer here, but he did not state that he was removing himself from the quorum.
All right, guys, we're going to carry on with the next item on the agenda. The next item on the agenda is the appointment of a council member.
Have some good faith. Why don't we just allow the citizens to come up and explain their greatest business and their problems?
Council members. If you, right now, I'm sorry, sir. It is your decision, the next item that's up on the agenda is appointment of council member. Look, this item is noted on the agenda as subject to the direction of, I mean, subject to discretion of the mayor. Not knowing prior to this evening's ma- meeting who the mayor would be, until the election of, until the election of the council president, the, the determination, Mayor Burkey, is for you, whether you want to do this now or whether you want to do this Thursday. This item was never, is not written in stone. It's just on there at your discretion, being as we have no idea who it's going to be.
Yes, sir, and as far as that item, the appointment of a council member item, we're going to go ahead and postpone that until the regularly scheduled meeting on Thursday. That will give us time to interview people that have submitted their application for the position, and then we can, then we can get to know them a little bit better. So the next, uh, next item on the agenda is the election of the president of the city council.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to appoint Diana Roth as council president.
We've got a motion, do we have a second?
There's a motion. Do you wish to make a second?
I have seconded.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries two zero zero.
Two zero one.
Two zero one, I apologize. Motion carries two zero one for correction. All right, that concludes the formal action for tonight, and I con- I motion that we adjourn the meeting. You need, you need a motion. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn.
There's been a motion to adjourn the meeting, is there any discussion?
Ms. Roth, we...
She, she seconded.
All right, there's been a motion, did she second? All right, meeting is adjourned.